Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 p.m. The August 1st, 2022 regular council meeting will come. Please rise and join me.
Join me. Pleasure. Pleasure. Thank you. We're just standing here. One minute. For God's sake. That's my call.
Patty, would you please call the...
Councilmember Frank Banker.
President.
Councilmember Leslie Roderick.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Stedall.
I am here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunnen.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Interim City Manager Kyle Beakler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Patty. Our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Jody Shirley. Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a tall... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. All right, before we move to citizen comments, I'd like to bring everyone up to speed on what's happening in the town of Belle-Air Shore concerning their shade ordinance. For some time now, I've been pleading with Mayor Schmidt, Commissioner Bloom, and the Commission to change the ordinance to allow single pole umbrellas, at the very least, in the access areas. At their last meeting, Commissioner Bloom, motion to allow four-foot umbrellas in the accesses, and the motion passed. I realize that four-foot umbrellas are small, but it's a start, and the ordinance change has not yet been voted on. I have already contacted Commissioner Bloom and stressed that eight-foot umbrellas would better serve our citizens. I also told him that I planned to attend their next meeting to urge the Commission to amend the ordinance, allowing up to eight-foot umbrellas. This would allow two people to bring chairs and sit comfortably under an umbrella. As you may or may not know, changing an ordinance is a minimum of two meetings after deciding to do so, and still requires the majority of the Commission to agree to the change. Progress is slow, but it is still progress, and I remain optimistic concerning this matter. I would also like to remind everyone that our beach, Belle-Air Beach, is open to the public and warmly welcomes umbrellas. Now, we will hear citizen comments. During this time, you will be given three minutes to speak on any topic that is not already on the agenda. When called on, please go to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give us your name and address. Remember that you are addressing the council and not individuals. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. But first, I have a few people that have turned in cards that would like to speak. Starting first would be Yoli Roderick at 113 12th Street.
Good evening. I am Yoli Roderick of 113 12th Street, and I am glad we started with the Belle-Air Shore situation because that's what I would like to talk about. I have my three minutes. My husband Pete Roderick is there. He's giving me his three minutes, should I need it, because I'm long-winded sometimes, Linda Welch is also. I'd like to just give you a brief, really quick history. My husband and I bought this house 11 years ago, and the one and only reason we bought here was that beach over there. Five houses from the access. And that's where... That's the reason that many people buy here. Not Belle-Air Beach, not Indian Rocks, the fact that you're so close to the access. And for two years now, we have not been able to enjoy our beach, even though it has been deeded to us rightfully for over 70 years. And for this past summer, we have definitely not been able to enjoy it. My husband is the one that received a citation. A citation that requires him to attend, to appear in criminal court, to be arraigned and prosecuted for having an umbrella on the beach. Now, that is absurd. Absurd and a waste of everyone and all resources available. But that's what we're fighting. Now, I'd like to just suggest to this council, we've been here before, we've talked about this issue, two kind of avenues that we can proceed. Up to now, this council and the city has proceeded on ignoring the problem, staying out of the problem. As the resolution that was passed some time ago, Belle-Air Beach is not involved in this lawsuit. Belle-Air Beach is not involved in anything related to the beach. And that has been in books for quite a while. And I would like to point out that this doesn't really work because behind the scenes, things have been happening that interfere with our lawsuit. I am an intervenor in this lawsuit, and I appreciate the comments from the bench saying that they've spoken to the Belle-Air Shore meetings about possible settlement. Settlement comes from our lawsuit. It doesn't come from this board. And I personally resent your meddling into our lawsuit, muddling the waters, suggesting that they allow a four-foot stick umbrella that does not do anything, and not keeping and keeping in mind, or maybe not keeping in mind, that food is banned, bicycles are banned. So it isn't just an umbrella. There are more issues involved here. Fixing just an umbrella doesn't work. Also, I found out that Belle-Air Shore is anticipating keeping their citation books right here in Belle-Air Beach. Save it home. Put it in here because there's a deputy office or something here. And I find that outrageous that we will be storing the very method by which they use to harass our citizens. Also, this is going to impact property values. Already it's impacting. I know some people who bought homes and are angry that no one told them there's a ban on the umbrella. Also, it impacts tourism. This is the only beach that we can find in the entire state of Florida that doesn't allow umbrellas. And all for what reason? So that Belle-Air Shore residents, many who have been or are there shorter than I have been here, can have a 24/7 unobstructed view of the ocean. Well, they're not entitled to that. They have their land, their rights to the sand part back to their house, but unobstructed view is not one of their rights. And they should not, and that's the only reason. Go through your minutes, you will see. But I'd like to suggest an alternate plan. I'd like to ask all of you to stand up and fight back to support the citizens of this community. We are, what, 1,600, 1,200 strong? And there are only 60? I ask you to please support us in fighting this ban. We know that unprotected sun is a health hazard. It has been declared a carcinogen by the Department of World Health Organization.
Excuse me one second. Patty, I cannot see the clock. Can you tell me how many minutes it's been?
I'm getting Yoli Roderick's. She still has one minute and 15 seconds.
Is that my original three minutes?
Including your original three, I've added time for when we're discussing it, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Please continue.
You're going to add me some more minutes, right?
You'll have a timer that's actually lower. Is that okay?
And you recently received a flyer from the EMS saying July is heat advisory month or something like that, and how to protect yourself. That advisory, what's the number one thing on that advisory? An umbrella. Number two is clothing, then shade, sunglasses, and a hat. Number four is sunscreen. Umbrellas, number one. Belle-Air Shore Commissioners and Mayor have stated under oath that they have had skin cancer and therefore they don't go in the sun. But recently, one of the Commissioners had a party, and he had three umbrellas over his pool to protect his grandchildren. We want to protect our grandchildren. Lupus. You're going to...
How many more minutes, please?
Approximately 15 to 20 seconds.
Okay, is this from my original three minutes? I have nine minutes total.
Oh, no, I only heard you say Mr. Roderick.
Mr. Roderick and Linda Welch. And I've already lost maybe 30 seconds from the interruption.
No, no, I've added that one each time. So additional three there.
From Linda Welch.
Yes.
Continue.
Recently, you declared this council May, I think it is, Lupus Awareness Month. Are you aware what lupus does and what happens to lupus patients when they go into the sun? They don't get a sun tan. They have severe allergic reactions. One of our interveners is a lupus patient. So on one hand, you support lupus, and on the other hand, you support a umbrella ban by not doing anything for it. I just want to let you know that I go to every single Belle-Air Shore meeting, and for the past two meetings, they're planning a nice surprise for you. It may not be a surprise maybe to some of you, but they're planning to bill you for all of your legal fees for the lawsuit. They believe you are responsible per the interlocal for your legal fees, and that's coming. They've said it more than once. So I'm going to end by just saying, you may not be supporting the lawsuit, but you may end up paying for it in the end. I ask that you rethink your position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will remind you that we are in a formal meeting, and I will ask nicely for your refrain from the chair and the class. Thank you very much. Richard Hagerty.
I'll start the clock here because I don't want to be armed with six times while we're worried about the clock. Start. Richard Hagerty, 9th Street. So ironically enough, it's my wife who has lupus, and I think most of my neighbors know my story. 30 years in the Army. Won't go down that road again. Took a job after I retired from the military so I could afford to live near the beach, on the beach, access the beach safely and happily. Only to come to find out several months after my wife and I moved here that we really weren't allowed to enjoy the beach the way any other person in Florida and probably most of the United States does with common sense things like shade. Among other things, I want to talk about my wife for a few minutes this morning, or today, and not me. So, lost her mother to cancer very young as a teenager. Moved in with her father in Germany, who's also in the military. Took most of the brunt of raising her siblings. We met shortly after flight school. Got married. We've been together almost 28 years. She's been through a lot for combat deployments, raising our children, and a lot of other things. It was her dream to move to the beach also. Several years ago, probably seven, eight, nine years ago, she was diagnosed with lupus. And in addition to allergies, organ swelling, joint pain, lesions, and other things on top of just all the common sense things that we know comes from increased sun exposure. Now, I'm sure many people in the audience, maybe most of the people in Belle-Air Shore, their response is probably just stay inside. We don't care. It's not our problem. But that really isn't how people like to live their life. Not when there's common sense ways where you can do both. You can go and enjoy the beach as well as take care of your health. So, we talked about this a lot. I know promises were made during the campaign by then candidate Gaddis. I even actually sent about a page email back during one of the emails that came out promising that we were going to get right on top of it, that diplomacy was the way ahead. I outlined several concerns in, I think, a very professional manner. The right year if anybody would like to read them. And asking, so how can you assure us you're going to get this resolved? How can you guarantee it's not going to cost us money? How are you going to get around the lawsuit? Because in all of our minds, and my wife's been our leader, that really is our only hope because the council doesn't seem to be supporting its own citizens. And there was no answer. I got back simply a response, "Thanks." That's it. And I thought to myself, oh, no, another politician overpromising and underdelivering. Now, here we are, five months, four months past the election, and we've really seen no movement. I guess four-foot umbrellas, which is that, I guess if we laid on the ground and all huddled underneath them, I guess maybe that is a partial solution, but it's not one that we really think works. So, I implore the council to stand up and fight for your citizens. This is common sense. This isn't a ridiculous sign or anything else. It's common sense, and it's our help, and it's what we pay for, and it's what we elected you for. Three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Vicki Dwyer. Rick Shager.
Your final is to Mr. Manzo.
J.C. M. Phil.
Ladies, Mayor, Council, and everybody else. I'm not going to talk about an umbrella. I think I just walked into a hornet's nest. But I've come here on my own behest to compliment Paul Marino for his service to the city of Belle-Air Beach and the many years that he served. And now, as chairman of many committees that I've served on for the last 20-some years being a resident in the city, that Paul helped me and many on my committees. And this man deserves the Congressional Medal of Valor for putting up with what he put up with. The man deserves a round of anything we can think of. Good job, Paul Marino, from the citizens of Belle-Air Beach. Thank you very much, Paul.
Again, I will remind you refrain from applying applause. Next up is Joseph Manzo. Mr. Manzo, you have nine minutes.
I think that somebody wants to give me three more here. I got two people. I get 15, but 12 is the limit. You got that? Rick, go be my timer. You got one, two?
I'm sorry, you can only do 12 minutes.
Right, that's what... That'll be fine. We'll do 12 minutes. Ready? Begin. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers of Belle-Air Beach. I'm Joseph Manzo, former mayor, plaintiff in Manzoby, Belle-Air Shore. You know who I am. You know where I live. For two years, we have been fighting this battle. And sometimes it feels like I've been fighting it by myself with 48 courageous interveners behind me. That's wrong. That's why we're here tonight. We're here tonight to set the record straight. ABC News is here. 10 Times is here. We've been with CBS. We've been with Fox. I have all their phone numbers. There's no more lying. There's no more given information that's incorrect to anyone. Because when information comes out that's wrong, I go right to them, and I send it on. That's the New World Order now. Okay? People are coming around to the idea that little children, Frank Bankard's grandchild, is thrown out onto the sand on the same day that Councilmember Stephen Bloom is under a tent drinking beer out of a glass bottle. That's three violations. While his granddaughter got exposed to deadly ultraviolet rays. It's unacceptable. And I'm the one who put my name on the line. And I paid for it personally. I paid for it politically. And I don't care for anybody who thinks that the election results is going to silence me. You're incorrect. Now, let's go back down memory road and take a little picture of how this all started. Belle-Air Beach didn't bring this on, and I didn't bring this on. Nobody even had the decency to come to us as a council and tell us that they were having problems in Belle-Air Shore. In May and June of 2020, they had been meeting to pass the shade ordinance, the first of its kind as far as I can see in the entire country. I've looked far and wide, and I can't find any place that bans shade. But Belle-Air Shore did. Some of the reasons given, so people won't set up shop. And then my favorite quote, which appears in every legal document I make. Stephen Bloom, "Make it, the ordinance, as tough as you can, and maybe they'll go someplace else." I'm vague, and so are the 48 people behind me. We're vague, and so are your citizens that you are supposed to be watching now for. You know, you have a strategic plan. We worship it like it came down from Moses himself. It's the strategic plan. It's what governs your city. And the first thing in that strategic plan, the first thing, is safety of the citizens. And what have you done? There's one person on this council that's done something. Frank Bankard. And Frank didn't come to this council supporting this lawsuit. In fact, he ran against it. But when Frank saw what I was doing and the 48 interveners were doing, and his grandchild was hurt by being thrown out into the sun, changed his mind. I'm asking you to change your mind. Put your politics behind you. It's time to get in line behind us and help us. What can you do? How about... First off, Fred Riley sent a letter. Fred Riley's here tonight, thank God. And Fred Riley sent a letter telling Belle-Air Shore all their ordinances that they were violating. I'll vote Belle-Air Shore because I hear the tape of every meeting. They said that letter that you sent isn't worthy of a response. Really? You're violating your own ordinances? By the way, that was a big topic of my depositions with them. They violated it. You know what one of the people said? Well, we just make the ordinances for the other people. It reminded me of Leona Helmsley when she said, "Little people pay taxes." That would have been the same guy who was drinking the beer under the tent that day. It's for the other people. We have a constitution in the state of Florida. You know that ceremony when we raised your hand and you swore allegiance to it and protect it? I just wrote a legal brief on behalf of Pedro Roderick. And in that legal brief, it explains how this violates three portions of the Florida Constitution. I'm seeking to overturn their ban. Dave Gaddis went and spoke at their meeting. That's wonderful. But he doesn't speak for us, as Yoli Roderick said. I speak for me on this lawsuit. It's Manzoby, Belle-Air Shore. And that's not what I'm seeking. I'm not seeking a four-foot umbrella. By the way, it's not four-foot high, as the Colonel said. It's four-foot wide. It's a golf umbrella, guys. In fact, I measured my golf umbrella, and it was 49 inches. So I'd be in violation by one inch. 49 inches. Enough to butt on the seventh grade. Not enough to protect your family. It's ridiculous that my grandchildren who are coming here can't have an Oreo cookie on the beach, that they can't protect themselves from the sun, that I may have to take them up to Clearwater so that they can enjoy a beach, despite the fact that I spent hundreds of thousands of my money to live across the street from the beach. Why? What's this great love for Belle-Air Shore? I want you to hear what your mayor said to Belle-Air Shore on May 17. It's short. It's 30 seconds.
Finally, if we can get these over quality triggers under control, maybe between what you and Joseph Manzo are working on, and possibly these changes, maybe we can get back something where we have single pole umbrellas that we can connect to a chair or establish around and not giant candies, but just something that's not so invasive and not such a hassle with your community. We love your community. We think that it's a treasure for all of us.
We love your community? I don't love your community. I don't love that community at all. They're exposing us to deadly carcinogenic UV rays from the sun while they themselves protect themselves. Because you know why? They've had skin cancer. Steve Bloom and Robert Schmidt admitted that to me. Before Dave Gaddis did this little speech saying that we'd be satisfied with a single pole umbrella, I had had lunch with Robert Schmidt. We were at two months of negotiations. I had a nine-point settlement for them. That went down the drain. So no problem. I'll take it to court. We're going to court this Thursday. We're going to get this thing overturned. And then Friday, we have the case management meeting on Manzoby, Belle-Air Shore. This is unconstitutional. You swore to uphold the Constitution. It's easy to be popular when you say yes. We have 30 years of mayors before me that said yes to Belle-Air Shore. Yes, yes, yes. And you lost the gates. They put gates up. You lost food. You lost bicycles. And then umbrellas. And finally, someone stood up. Not you. Me. It's time to stand up and say no. Write a letter back to them and tell them, do a resolution. You know how to do one. Do a resolution and tell them that you are disgusted and you demand that they repeal this ordinance. Talk to your people at the Big C and the Mayor's Council and every place else you can. Talk to your elected officials. You know how to reach them. Some of you had some nice support when you ran for election. You know how to reach these people. Call them. Tell them you want legislative support. Get behind the people of Belle-Air Beach. You work for Belle-Air Beach. That sign behind you says Belle-Air Beach. You love Belle-Air Beach. You don't love Belle-Air Shore. We've tried to spread the love for years. And you know what? Two weeks after Mayor Gaddis went to Belle-Air Shore on Memorial Day, the police came out and harassed everyone on 12th Street. I know I was there. They also harassed the African-American couple next to us. They got the written warning, but nobody else got a written warning. What's that all about? And two weeks later, Pedro Roderick from Cuba gets the first summons. What's that all about? Pedro didn't tell you, or his wife didn't tell you. Pedro came here from Cuba on Operation Peter Pan. That's where the little children were separated from their parents and came to the United States to get away from the oppressive regime of Castro. And what's he come to? A town of 58 people that takes away his beach rights and his constitutional rights. We have deeded rights. We have constitutional rights. If you want to know the law, go onto the public site, the city clerk, the clerks of Ellis County. Type in Pedro Roderick. You'll find my motion to dismiss. You'll find a 20-page brief. You will find it on Nextdoor. You will find it in the chit-chat. You will find it in the people that are non-lawyers. You'll find 20 pages of cited legal information. That's what you stand on. That's why it's illegal. It's time to stand up and represent your people. It's time to stand up and protect this Constitution. Lead, follow, or get out of the way. Please, don't get in my way in my lawsuit. I don't need your legal help. But the citizens of this city could use your support. Time to not be popular and do what has to be done. Tell them you don't like their law. You don't love them. You don't even like them. You want the law changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone that would like to speak that did not turn in a call? Yes, sir.
Rudy Davis, 6 Bell, Bellisle Avenue. I would just remind everyone that Mr. Manzo lost the last election. He only achieved 23% of the vote. That opposed as lawsuits is manner. 77% of the Bellar Beach residents voted for a calm demeanor on council discussions, not lawsuits with Bellashore. The reason for the long delay is the lawsuit. The fact that they can't talk anymore to us because they're being sued. Had that not happened, a lawsuit would have waited. We could have had these discussions like the mayor is having now. It's step by step making some progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, we need Sammy Keith. I live at 109 Harbor Drive. I would like to thank all of you for what you do. And I have walked the beach for almost 20 years until I had health issues. I have encountered many people in Bellashore numerous times. I do the beach conservation, the turtle rescue, and the bird rescue and things. So I've had direct contact with them. It got difficult in the beach?
Who's Keith? I talked to the people.
Okay. There were many different times that people put up the big spur tents and they'd leave them there for the entire weekend when they were here. I would deal with it because they'd leave it overnight. Not my turtle nests, but the turtle nests. And the birds would be trapped in the different things. And I understand the negativity that Bellashore had. I had one of the older ladies that I helped, men were having sex under seawall. I found all kinds of horrible things. This wouldn't be settled if it wouldn't be of the animosity. I talked to the people in the council out there. And I agree with you, Mayor Gaddis. They want at least a seven-foot umbrella. That's going to happen. If it wasn't for the lawsuit, it would be there. Anyway, thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you. Other citizens? Yes?
Jim Vancecoy, 7th Street, Bellar Beach. First of all, at any given time, and what has occurred was Mayor Schmidt reached out to their attorneys and got permission to have a private one-on-one conversation with former Mayor Manzo. So at any given time, this could be handled. And as far as people were saying, drop the suit, start their negotiations, if we had dropped the lawsuit, there would have not been any discussions and the lawsuit couldn't have been pursued at any time. So people need to understand that as well. He went through and he stuck his nose out, his neck out, everything to help the citizens of this city. They were doing nothing. They were given a two-week notice to respond. Then they didn't respond and they were given almost two months to square this way before the suit was filed. The fact of the matter is, they've been given ample time to try to work through this. Settlement negotiations have not taken place before. Before, let's make this clear. The depositions were taken of their mayor and vice mayor. And it was a sworn testimony. So all the lies, all the bathroom stuff that has gone on is just bad. Lies. Second of all, if we do not win this case, it's not just for our city. It's other cities around the state of Florida. And it also has to do with protecting the rivers, the lakes, having umbrellas. Do you not think that they will address this and use this to ban them around those places as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Kim Young, 1way, 1st Street. I'm not here all the time, but I'm here a lot. And I just want to say, I have been so happy since March that I could finally sit back and appreciate my property. Talking to many neighbors, a lot of whom are not overly involved. We do appreciate the city councils representing us and working with Bellar Shores. You know, I like to go with the idea that sometimes you get more flies with honey than vinegar. As an attorney, I will tell you that my first order is always to try to work out things with the other side. We have a city attorney that we pay to look into these things for the city. So I just want to say, I really appreciate the calm that we've had for a little while. And I appreciate everything the city council and anybody in the city has done to help the residents. And I fully firmly believe that the city council represents us as citizens of Bellar Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, in the back of the area.
Hi. My name is Helen. I live on Spruce. I do not understand what was so rowdy where we live. I've been here for five years. Nothing has been rowdy. Our rights were taken away. That's the only difference in this city that's been going on, besides all the other things that were taken from us. Ms. Keith has been doing cleanup for beaches. Maybe she's confusing Indian Rocks Beach with Bellar Beach on her cleanups. That's usually where the tents get left. Never seen a tent get left on Bellar Beach. But there's been nothing that's been done to help my family and I go to the beach in a safe manner in these past two years. You promised that you would come in here and help us get our umbrellas back. Nothing has been done. You're in three months. It should have been a quick turnaround, regardless of the lawsuit that Mr. Manzo has going. This should have been something that you said to Bellar Shores, "Our citizens cannot go to the beach without an umbrella," regardless of Mr. Manzo's lawsuit. It has nothing to do with him. It has to do with your duties as our elected officials to protect us. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to item number three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to interject here, since you opened the door for, before citizens' comments about this subject.
Mr. Baker, I only made an opening statement and it is not open for discussion.
I believe we brought the parliamentary law, Robert's rules of order, since you opened the door and brought this to the attention of citizens beforehand of public comment and then went right to point of order. I had a right to speak.
Yes, sir. Point of order is being called. I'm going to go to City Attorney Mora for an opinion on this.
Expounding again that parliamentary procedure is not caught off by law, statute, or otherwise during case law, I would advise that the presiding officer introducing the topic does not by itself somehow create an automatic opening of the door. The recognition of members to speak is at the discretion of the presiding officer in the meaning there's nothing here rules of procedure that, to my knowledge, specifically addresses this. And so I would defer to the judgment of the presiding officer.
Thank you very much. So the point of order stands. Now we will move on to item number three, which is the law enforcement report. Please come up, state your name, and let's have it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was kind of sheriff's office. Before me tonight, I have for you the 2022 report for the month of June. On the first page of that report, the UCR property and personal crimes report shows that there were three assaults, one burglary, and two murder schemes. Second page of the report is the arrest report. There were seven people arrested during the month of June 2022 on nine different charges. The third report shows the deputy activity. There were 862 events resulting in 959 deputy responses in your city during the month of June 2022. And finally, the last page of the report, there are no crashes during the month of June 2022. And there were a total of 167 combination of citations and warnings issued in pursuit during the month of June 2022.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I have a couple of questions regarding the assaults and burglaries. Were those, well, first, let's talk about the assaults. Were those residents? Were they people passing through the city? Want us to put a little more background on that?
Two of the assaults, and of course, when they say assaults on their report, that's assault and batteries. There was one domestic battery in the city last month. That was a resident. There was none resident on 21st Street that was arrested for an assault. And then the last one were two different construction workers at a home construction site. One was under the roof.
Any other questions? It's rare that we see a stalking complaint or a violation, rather. We have the city information on that.
It's an isolated incident with that one person. He has a long record with the city and neighbors in that neighborhood. Stalkings happen anywhere. If I continually harass you or do something else and I keep seeking you personally to commit some sort of crime, then you go into a stalking charge.
All right. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
All right, now we're on to code enforcement.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. Steve Clapkin for the record. This is my first appearance. In the last two months, I had some time off that I had to take. And Mayor, I want to thank you for giving me that authority to take that time off and not be able to be here. In the last 30-some days, we've still working on a lot of the violations within the city itself, whether it's landscaping or different types of grass problems in certain lots. We are working on that and I'm working with that with Kyle. One of the biggest things we got was I got a call of a gentleman that was going around one Friday evening soliciting to do electrical work. I spoke to one of the residents between 1st and 2nd on Harbor Drive, and they informed me that this man had been coming around. I did some research on it, come to find out, he wasn't licensed. He wasn't insured. He was not a contractor. I worked with the Public, or the PPCLB, the licensing bureau, found out that this gentleman came from Colorado. In doing some research, I spoke to five different residences on 1st Street. Told me that they did get approached by this man. The licensing bureau is now actively going after him. He's going to receive five different citations for soliciting work, not being licensed, and he's not a contractor. He did give an email of the gentleman that he was working for out of Brooksville, Florida. I spoke to him, come to find out, yeah, he applied for a job, but his job, or this gentleman, actually does a lot of business work, doesn't do any residential. So he did send him a letter of cease and desist. The information was forwarded to Kyle. And the city's also going to be sending him a letter saying, basically, you can't solicit within the city limits and to stay out. And I encourage anybody who's been approached by this gentleman to give me a call or come by here to City Hall and I'd be more than happy to take care of it. Other than that, everything else is still going flowing. Our little situation on 22nd with the boat. I did check with our marine unit. That boat is registered through the Coast Guard. And as they can tell currently, he is not doing any commercial work. It's just a gentleman that owns that boat and he takes friends out on it. So we're still going to work on that. They're going to keep an eye on that situation for me. But other than that, everything else is going well and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel?
Counsel?
Yes? Frank Baker?
Thank you for your service first, Deputy. Just got a quick question for you that's important to me. What is the process? You go on a residence property job site to find out the contractor isn't either, his license just recently expired or didn't get the permit at hand, and they're installing an AC air conditioning unit. Job's primarily overdone. And it's in the months of like June through October?
Okay. I don't understand which question it is.
Well, would you cease, would you order the job to cease right away? Or would you let that job continue fine appropriately so the residents can get their AC unit back up?
Well, the way that works is, and I believe I know what situation you're talking about, while on regular patrol, I did see this truck. It had removed the inside AC unit and the outside AC unit. There were no markings on the truck itself. That in within itself is a violation of state statute. So I went up to the residents, spoke to the homeowner, asked him about who's putting the air conditioner, if I could speak to them. Gentleman came out and I'll tell you, it was very pleasant. He didn't understand why I was there. Thought it was not my position to do stuff like this. So as I tried to explain to him, the homeowner came out, we talked. I was also told there was an emergency install because they had no AC, but the house had two separate AC units. And under the county's regulations, that doesn't require, or is not considered, an emergency repair. So basically, what I did do was contacted the building department. They advised me that no permit was pulled. The Pines County Licensing Board actually took that investigation over. The gentleman came in, was the air conditioning company came in here. It was the next day or day after. They finally filed for the permit. So basically, what you're asking me, if I see somebody working at a house, vehicle's not marked, I will get out, just inquire to see what's going on. I will tell you that the majority of the time, even today, when I was up on 17th Street, I caught somebody out there doing work on a pool. Was it licensed? Hadn't been licensed in Pinellas County for four years. And again, I'm into education over enforcement. In this case, again, my side of the investigation on 22nd Street was nothing more than a warning. But that information's turned over to the licensing bureau and they will cite somebody in that instance.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? No? All right, thank you very much, Deputy.
Thank you. You all have agreed.
All right, up next, we have more presentations. Former city attorneys Paul Marino and Frank Riley, please join me at the podium. All right, there we go. This first award is presented to Paul Marino. And it says, "With sincere appreciation for your dedicated service to the city of Bellar Beach from May 1998 to July of 2019." Thank you very much for your service, Eric. Next up, Fred Riley. With sincere appreciation for your dedicated service to the city of Bellar Beach from July 2019 to January 2022. Thank you very much.
I really had a plan for it.
I just want to say, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve this city. And I've seen many things take place since the day I walked in the door. Especially want to thank people like Rudy Davis over here, who had the wisdom to see the importance of a city manager, former government, working with Leslie, Mike Kelly back here, who was a great asset to this city. And I wish you all the best of luck in the future. Congratulations again. Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Rumors of my demise have been greatly exaggerated. I wanted to say thanks to the city council. In January, had a very difficult start of the year and abruptly needed to focus on other things. And in the last six months, I've had quite a ride. But I've gotten positive mojo and prayers from all corners. And frequently have citizens from Bellar Beach come up to me at the Publix, or the Publix Liquor Store. Talk to me and I very much appreciate that. You have a beautiful community. You know, talk to me and I very much appreciate that. And you have a beautiful community and I know this more than ever. Life is short, please enjoy it. So, thank you, Dave.
All right, we're up to item six, which is the city attorney's report. Mr. Moore, do you have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the benefit of all present, following the workshop, I will be contacting the candidate for the manager position, proceed with the negotiation process. Before I continue with anything else, I do want to say what a tremendous honor it is to sit in a seat where Mr. Marino sat for nearly two decades and Mr. Riley, for his years of service as well, had the honor of serving communities after Mr. Marino around this county. He's very well respected and I'm sure served this community well. I appreciate the opportunity to follow that act, if you will. That said, I have been in regular contact with your manager, your interim manager and your clerk on a number of issues. We continue to handle public records requests and streamlining those as well as working through various contracts issues and code enforcement. Not a day goes by that Kyle and I don't talk even for a few minutes. So please note that we're working here and again, I remain available to you folks as I were to you at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, now we are to the city manager's report. Mr. Reitler?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First project we have is the follow-up of the 1213 Fifty Days Street project. That's going to be, what I wrote on the report is that we had a lead time of sixteen weeks to receive the material. I got good news today. It looks like the material's going to be shipped August 22nd. So we're back sort of what we thought originally on this project. So given that, planning a pre-con meeting tomorrow, or sorry, on Wednesday, and then looking to have the project started into August beginning of September. Followed up by the drainage project on Seventeenth and Eighteenth Street. The news is, we got the two streets, the pipes on those streets camered. I didn't know the video of my possession. I've sent it to the engineers for review in consideration for what we designed this next project. We stuck it in last week on Wednesday and Thursday. With the tides, it was tricky, but we were able to get it done in the evening. The Gulf Boulevard Underground project, Vice Mayor Gunn and I have been meeting, we've met a couple times already, going through some of the numbers, laying out all the different options, talking about finding options, project plans, and I've been gathering more and more information on our possibilities with that project. We plan on presenting this to the council in a work session, assuming the third Monday of August. The Seventh Street renovation, Seventh Street Boat Ramp Project along with the Sixteenth Street Sewell renovation, that permits are filed with the county. We're waiting for review. There's a little bit of lag time with the water navigation. We're required to get a dredge and fill permit through the county for that project. We're looking at, we're hoping two weeks to have either comments or the permit itself get started on that. The City Hall Sewell project, we talked about that in the last meeting. I provided the council with the plan for that sewell. In the 2023 capital projects fund, we are setting aside $30,000 for that project. It may be enough, it may be a little bit more, but it's something to consider as far as getting that done to prevent the erosion that's occurring over there. The generator grant, unfortunately, I heard back from the state, we did not achieve the benefit to cost ratio that was needed for the project itself. I spoke with the state engineers. They assured me that they went through multiple scenarios. I provided as much information as I could as using the building as a, not only an EOC, but also as like a pod purpose of housing residents during an emergency. Given the numbers, we just weren't able to reach for a BCR. You need to at least have a one-to-one ratio. The highest that could be achieved was a .38. Speaking with the state project manager, typically generator projects cannot be reached unless they are a hospital or a, like a fire department. Kind of wish I'd be like going in, did get some further insight into the future grants. Moving forward, I attempted to contact the project manager and see if I could sell out this project or the other. I wasn't able to. So looking forward to the next grant cycle, which is going to be this coming fall for future projects. Lastly, I got the Chover's Playground. That, unfortunately, is on back order as well. The equipment is set to be here in February. I had the staff go out and patch the damage slide, the hulls over to keep some kind of structure there where it won't pose a danger. And we're looking to let them all rest in January prior to installing the playground.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
With respect to the emergency generator, we have placed money in the reserve for this budget cycle, anticipating an answer on the grant for emergency generator. And when we put the money in the reserve in this year's budget, we anticipated the possibility of making a hard decision on whether or not we're going to move forward upon this thing. So I think we need to start thinking about that and what's the next step on this thing, whether or not we're going to move forward.
Thank you. Other counsel with us? Brett Piper?
Yes, city manager, interim city manager. Is there any update on the 105 Eighth Street Tower? I know the fifteen days has now elapsed. Was there a permit ever produced? What's the next step?
There was no permit produced and it was on the code report. We'll see on July 30th, we sent a notice appearing to that address.
What date is that? Let me ask you now.
It's scheduled for August 24th.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have a question about that. Was there even an intent made to obtain a permit?
Did not.
Then I have another question about the pipe that I sent you a picture of on the Bay Shore Drive. Were you able to look into that?
That pipe, as they cleaned, it did have some blockage from oysters. We had that blasted out. Need to get the camera in there and a couple of time hold to be able to see what we're looking at as far as that thing is. I did tackle Seventeenth and Eighteenth Street first and get that done.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, and thank you. And we will move right over to the city clerk's report. Ms. Gentry, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just did the processing after the citizens advisory committee and city council did all of their work. So that's just a list of the ongoing processes after each of their meetings. And then there's a board of adjustment hearing coming and that is just preparation still in process. And the last thing is the city of Ballard Beach hosted the Barrier Islands Governmental Council monthly meeting. And that's all I have here.
And I would like to add to that. Patty did an excellent job. I'm sure that you had to have somehow. There's no way you could have done all that by yourself, but it was incredible. All of the big seamen were very impressed. They said we had a beautiful facility. The view was great. They were, you knocked their socks off. So, nice job.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
Patty, with respect to the way email goes out for council members, the, we had discussed at one time, including the citizens advisory committee, has carved a copy on those, just because they are stakeholders in the leadership process. And my question is, is does everyone own a separate email or?
Yes, sir. They have their own distribution room. So, yes, I do send it separately.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I have a quick question. Do the board of adjustment hearing, what day is that? August? I'm sorry, what day?
August the 11th.
Six o'clock. And I second the job well done on the big sea game. It was beautiful and it turned out very nice. Thank you for representation as well.
Anyone else? Nope. All right. Well, now we are to the consent agenda. Items nine, ten and eleven are approval of the June 6th, 2022 city council meeting minutes, approval of the June 23rd special council meeting minutes, and approval of the June 30th, 2022 special counting minutes, special council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Leslie Latara, and do I have a second?
Sure.
Lynn Gunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A opposed. All right, the consent agenda passes. All right, we're up to regular agenda now. This is item 12, an ordinance change. City Attorney Moore, would you please give the first reading?
Happily, Mr. Mayor. Just give me a moment to get to that page and materials. This is ordinance 2022-03, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, repealing in its entirety section 30-141 of the city code ordinances pertaining to the Gulf of Mexico Safety Zone, providing for the incorporation of recitals, providing for administrative direction regarding removal of existing buoys in the Gulf of Mexico, providing for the resolution of conflicting code provisions and providing for effective date. This has been a reading of ordinance number 2022-03 by title only on first read. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Before we move into discussions, do I have a motion?
Motion.
I think we're going to have to actually...
Okay, motion to ordinance 30141, same code ordinance.
2203. That's ordinance number 22.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm talking about section 30. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, regular agenda doesn't specify.
So we're looking for whether, what is the nature of your motion? Is there a motion?
Oh, motion to remove section 30-141.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Lynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to open this because I want to make sure I have an accurate perception of what we're trying to do here. And because Leslie is in the condos and probably deals more with those people, probably she's going to have to help me along here. My recollection is when all this discussion and debate started with the buoy situation, we were given basically an option of making the changes or taking them off. That's my reflection of it. So the next thing that happened is we had kind of a town hall meeting where people came in. We had a public hearing essentially, and people came in to give us their inputs on how they thought the design of the buoy should be laid out. And we added sections lanes for boat access to the beach. And there was some question about that. However, during that very first public hearing, the vast majority of people who got traction in that meeting were boat owners and they felt, well, if we're going to redesign the buoy system, we would like to have these lanes to come into the beach. The next thing that happens is the word starts getting around with the condo residents and they had some concerns about the buoys and the depiction of the new layout for the buoys. The third thing that happens is we go to the first public reading of the changed ordinance that laid out the new buoy depiction on Ballard Beach. They had, I believe, three boat lanes there. Well, there was some concern by the condo residents and they made their prepared to us, came to the meeting. And the next thing that happened is when we looked for a motion to change that ordinance, it died because there was no motion for, no second. It died. So my, the next thing that happened, and we're up to item four, we have this before us now, strikes out the depiction of the Gulf of Mexico Safety Zone and basically removes all of the buoys from Ballard Beach. And I just want to make sure I understand that the concerns at the time when we discussed the layout was, are we creating an opportunity for boats to start coming in and creating nuisance on the beach because of those boat access lanes? And because we didn't, we took that action, we went right to that action. And then the follow-on action was, it wasn't, it died. Now we're taking out all of the buoys. So my concern is, are we creating an unexpected consequence whereby they're taking out all of the buoys and now it's just open season for any boat to come upon the beach from the condos there? And I'm just, I'm wondering, am I reading this wrong or is it?
I believe I'm probably better positioned to respond here, the member Latara. So what you have are mutually exclusive policy positions.
Sure.
Based on the responses we received from FWC and the current state of the law and federal, in the Florida Administrative Code, the wave zones that we have, that you have, are not a permissible designation within your waterways based on the required criteria to be able to have that. And so you were allowed to have, you could have a vessel exclusion zone, a swim area, a safety zone, as it's historically called, where no vessels would be allowed. With some, potentially with additional showing, you could establish a vessels under manpower only or something kind of zone like that. Or you could arrange the swim zones in particular areas and allow for carabouts as this, as was ultimately proposed to you, trying to balance the equities of the interests that administration expressed to you as policymakers. That ordinance that had a specific design that had been submitted to FWC to make sure they felt our ordinance aligned with what their, with what the administrative code permitted, was put to this council on July 5th fail. Your question about will there be unintended policy consequences? There are forever unintended policy consequences for any decision. That's, you know, just every drop leaves or every, you know, drop in the ocean has ripples. There may be ripples, no pun intended, in the waters here. But I will tell you that once this, once this, once there was no will by the legislative body of this community to propose, amend or discuss an arrangement that preserved buoys in any arrangement, that said to us that there was, that the inverse conclusion must be drawn. When we informed FWC of the fact that the ordinance had not passed the proposed arrangement, they said, okay, so what are you going to do about your code? Which I advise the manager was a very natural response to say, well, we don't have any intent to preserve this anymore. They say, great, we'll take it out so that no policymaker in here comes in and says, well, this is on the books. And so that is, this is a cleaning it up to align with the implication of your policy decision to not advance, discuss or amend the proposed arrangement with buoys. The public out, the public response that you heard was largely in opposition to the presence of those buoys. This simply memorializes that. This is a discreet amendment removing one section, the one section that establishes the safety zone. By the way, that nomenclature would have had to come out anyways. It was, safety zone was cut out in that proposed amendment.
So my question is though, is because there was a silence and the motion died, my question was, that might have been the precipice for the unexpected consequence here. And that is, and if you back up and look at this, Indian Logs just faced the exact same situation. So what did they do? Well, the Stan's approach to this is you make it now a boat exclusion zone. The buoys are still there. They're still providing safety to the swimmers on the beach and nothing's really changed.
I'm told they have a handsome and brilliant city attorney and I prefer him. I prefer him. I'm familiar with what each jurisdiction, and this is the joy of political, right? Each jurisdiction can dictate what it desires, that is how that community chose to respond. This enactment, proposed enactment before you reflects nearly a year of your correspondence back and forth with FWC and the dialogue happening at a staff level and at an attorney level on trying to find something that balanced that particular equities and interests of this particular community. And having seen a series of proposals involving buoys be ultimately unsuccessful, the message to, from the policymakers is, we're not interested in seeing this, our residents haven't expressed to us some, some strong desire for this, such that we wish to advance this further. And so, if that is the case, we cannot have, we cannot continue to maintain the law and the books as it is. I do, you would disservice if I leave void provisions within your code. Once I'm under the hood, we fix what's there, and so this is the fix, is to remove that. If you enjoy, if, sorry, I just want to conclude. You enjoy the legislative discretion, should you at some later date choose to revisit that? You may revisit that, political will aside, just procedurally, you may revisit that. But at this stage, what we brought for you is to finalize those exchanges with FWC so we can say, we are in compliance, and here's how our code complies.
So, I certainly understand making the ordinance look like what we wanted the outcome to look like. And I guess I'm questioning the outcome, is that what we really want? Did we really think of it in those terms?
I can comment on that. I can tell you what they didn't want. And I have, I've literally received dozens of emails, phone calls, and people coming out to me in the meetings and speaking with us during the breaks, and I did not have, not one single person said, we must have these, I want this fixed. I never got that out one time. Now, there may be people out there that do want the buoys, but I have not heard that. All I have heard is, there's no record of boat issues, and I think you heard it, probably the exact same thing that I did. And as representatives of our community, I believe we have no choice but to respond to our constituents. I'd like to give others the opportunity to speak. That's all right. We're being heard.
A lot of people who talked, who spoke at the June 6th meeting were objecting to having the boat zones and the swim zones. And that just didn't, we've never had a problem that I know, there, you know, people will bring their boat in to pick up the grandkids, you know, but nobody comes in at warp speed or anything like that. And so, if we have to take, if we can't have the buoys out, let's say, you know, out farther, let's say...
Boat exclusions.
Boat exclusion zone, or, then we'll just take them all out. Don't see a problem with it.
And that's what I heard. In fact, they were highly opposed to having, they weren't boat zones, they were not regulated zones, is what they were. And whenever Lynn and Kyle were working on this, Lynn specifically had us label them as boat zones, and it looked terrible. It looked like calling all boats. And that was, that's not, that was not the intention, that was not what we were looking for. But they did realize that no matter where you put those open zones, condo owners felt like they were being slighted and not being treated fairly. Others, I'd say about 50% of them, spoke up and said, well, I don't like them at all, and I won't them gone. And if there's anything you can do to make them go away, do it, because we don't believe there's a problem. So, that's, that's what we've, what we've been dealing with. And my, my response to that has been, well, now it's all boat zone. The entire beach is a boat zone. So, that's, that's where we are right now, and that's why we have two readings so that we can think about it. But today, I have not had a single person come to me and say, you need to stop this, you need these buoys. I have not heard that. And I, and I see council member Baker's hands up, so please, Mr. Baker.
Yeah, first of all, I thought ordinance was before they gave one, the agenda was supposed to be worked out at a work session. Am I incorrect on that?
Yes, your understanding is incorrect. There's not a base requirement in the law or code that an ordinance be worked out before presented.
So, who directed you to come up with this ordinance, I guess?
I, I received my direction from the city manager after conferring with him and FWC on communicating the failure of the amendment at the July 5 meeting. The, my advice had been, we will likely need to repeal this. The agency responded to say, we would like to see this repealed without being aware of my advice. And given that meeting of minds, and I asked the manager if I could proceed with presenting something to the commission that memorialized some action, and here we sit.
Well, I believe this should have been addressed at a work session because we just had a bunch of residents coming about safety on beaches, and this is one of the beaches. I don't know, Mr. Dennis, if you don't get the same emails I get, you see one today, a citizen complimenting our safe area, emphasizing buoys, and then he sent the call to council. I've received a number of emails about preserving the buoys from back to Bel Air Shores, which we had in a local agreement for over 20 years that our former city manager took it on his own accord without addressing council to aggregate that agreement. Earlier, never fulfilled the duties and the requirements for that permit. And I pulled up IRVs minutes of this month, and I didn't know if this was you, Mr. Moore, or you had a twin, but it says, and I'm just reading off the minutes, it says, the city can have no buoys, and it would be an open season for all of us. I think that clearly states, and it also said, discouraged removing all of those. Just to paraphrase the minutes of July IRV. So, we have citizens that came here in June, okay, that were not residents. I believe there were only two residents, all of whom were condo owners, okay? They weren't residents. We've had residents emphasize safety, we have a strategic plan, which I think is a joke because we don't follow, but, and the number one issue is safety. But, hey, remove the buoys if you guys see fit, but let the blood be on your hands and snickering if somebody gets hurt or killed out there. I mean, because when this motion failed, or the motion failed for the ordinance for the swim zone, vessels zone, which six of you guys, not being voted to bring it out of the workshop, introduced it on the agenda, not wanting to vote, not wanting to make a motion to move forward to discuss it, all right? I've always stated that FWC is incorrect, 32746, we do comply with it. I've contacted the attorney general's office about this today. I sent them a long, long, long letter with exhibits from Aiden, I believe I. And, hey, if somebody gets hurt, I can make, I can make sure that I, for the safety of the people of Bel Air Beach, visitors of Bel Air Beach, residents of Bel Air Beach. Thank you.
City Attorney Moore, would you like to comment on the validity of this statement about the FWC?
I would say that FWC is tasked with interpreting its ordinance and its Florida Administrative Code. I've talked with Mr. Banker very briefly about the provisions that he has cited. I don't reach the same legal conclusion in terms of the defining terms and how they apply throughout the ordinance, but my own subjective interpretation is not what is controlling the area, is controlled by the agency tasked with enforcing and administering this. That said, excuse me, that said, this is what, I am not a policymaker in this community. I want to be very clear, as I'm newer to being your attorney and meeting your wonderful public and working with you folks, I don't make policy here. You folks do make put together a policy proposal that I think aligns more closely, though not precisely word for word with what the value of number bankers, opposing that did not succeed. I can't will it to be so one way or the other. I presented you an option, and ultimately, the majority of this body will dictate what this community looks like as the process should.
And thank you for clarifying that. I was not looking for an opinion on how to vote, I'm only looking on the validity of this statement. Do we have any other council members? Yes, Lloyd Roberts.
I was fortunate that a very nice citizen of Bel Air Beach called me on the phone and asked if I would like to take a boat trip up and down the beach area, starting in Clearwater Beach and going fairly far to the south. So, that was very beneficial to me so that I could get a firsthand view of all the buoys that were existing out there today, the type of language they have on the buoys, also had an opportunity to see which areas of our beach actually currently had no buoys. So, that was kind of eye-opening. One of those areas is Bel Air Shores, for the most part. I think the entire Bel Air Shores area has no buoys. There may be one that would be debatable. I live on 20th Street, so we access the 19th Street parking area a lot, and we use that beach area here because obviously, if I chose to, I could go 15 feet towards Bel Air Beach, and I'm outside of the umbrella task. But in all the times my wife and I, and family, and grandchildren have been out there, I can't even tell you if I've ever seen a boat come up to the shore on Bel Air Shores. Not that I'm actually looking for it, but nothing caught my eye to where I said, wow, look at that boat, there's like 20 people dancing on the beach, and they docked their boat on the shore. There may have been a boat there at one time or another, I'm just telling you, I never recall seeing any. I think the good news here, as Lynn said earlier, that if we did decide to remove all the buoys, at any time in the future, we would now have the option of putting buoys in if we thought there was an issue out there. I also understand that the condition of the buoys that we have out there now, even if we had moved forward with the new ordinance, almost all of those buoys, when I was talking to the previous city manager, he felt like those would have had to have been removed, and we would have had to have acquired new buoys. So, the fact that we, if we did take them down, and in some time in the future, we decide to put buoys back in for whatever reason they may be, it's not like we lost money, and somebody might say, well, we should have gotten rid of the buoys previously, now we have to buy new ones. My understanding is, we would have probably had to buy new ones anyway. So, just wanted to pass that along. Thanks.
Okay. Julie Shul.
Just follow up on that, Lloyd. The buoys we currently have are not in compliance with the current requirement with FWC. So, we have to do something one way or the other. My position on the swim zone versus boat zone is now we've created three large boat zones along our beach that encourage boaters to come in. That was my concern with the boat zone versus, and no one's gonna be happy wherever they're at. So, doesn't matter what condo you put them behind, what beach access you put them behind, no one's gonna be satisfied because it does open up to, now we've labeled this a boat zone, and guess what that becomes? It becomes the next sandbar for all of the drunken teenagers and their parents' boats to go up and anchor up and have parties. It's good to create a nightmare. So, when we had this discussion with the residents, there was, there were quite a few that were just in support of removing the buoys completely. Now, I, like you, I go to Clearwater Beach quite a lot, quite a bit, and when you get up towards the north end of, well, north of the pier, there are no buoys. There's, it's just swim, boating, whatever you want, and I don't see an issue when you get up near Caldezie, people, there's boats randomly anchored near the shore, they're not up on the shore, but it seems to work. It's working in other communities, I don't know, I, I'm not, ideally, I could see, I would prefer to have nothing changed, but that's not an option. So, that's where we are asked, and why this is here in front of us. We have to, we have to do something to comply with FWC. So, we either have the boat swim zone, or we have no buoys. Those are the choices.
Let's go to the citizens. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Yes.
Jill's Chamber, gosh, that was loud. 3207 Hibiscus Drive West. I rarely go to the beach. When my granddaughter visits, she likes to go to the beach, but I have taken boat down there, but I, I'm against boats coming to the shore. I have a neighbor in the neighborhood who likes to take his boat, takes it right on the shore, wants to take it on the shore, go two blocks to his house, let the dog out, do whatever they have to do, and then they get back in their boat. But I can see people partying because we're so close to Clearwater Beach, and there are a lot of, like jet skis. And it's unfortunate that we would have to take out the buoys that we currently have and to have to put in new ones, and that's an expense, and I don't know what that expense is, if you have that figure. I just, I agree with what Frank said about keeping the residents happy. You don't want to say, well, let's take the buoys out and see what happens. All you need is that one, one bad thing to happen. I hate to see that because you have kids that sometimes even if they go out, you know, beyond the buoys, I mean, that's, not to say this, but you're doing that yourself. But I would be, I'm against, I'm for having the buoys or, and not letting the boats come in. So, I had made that clear the last time. It was a lot of the condos, I get it, maybe it's an eyesore, but I think the safety is, is better than the eyesore, in my opinion.
Thank you. Other citizens? Yes.
Jim Dance, 7th Street. Now, I was at that meeting, and it was just to promote and inform the citizens. No discussions were made, the council wasn't allowed to vote on anything at the time, and since then, there has not been any work session. And the last time I checked, the council was the city manager's boss. They would relay what they wanted to the city manager. For this to proceed without this council's knowledge, I think is wrong on so many levels. If there's no checks and balances, and this is what has happened historically, if there's no checks and balances, then how can anything run efficiently? Okay? I do agree that there was way too many zones, and yes, it would have attracted boats in to be a party thing, I do agree with that. Okay? But as far as eliminating, I just don't agree with that. We have too many children that don't pay attention. We were out in Memorial, and we noticed a parent not monitoring their child. Okay? Teenagers swim out to the sandbars. Okay? If we at least have those buoys in place, okay, it is a safety zone. I think that we need to try to find a workaround. If, I, I believe that if we start tampering with this law, okay, I think it also can be, just like the nightmare with the short-term rentals, I think it can come back to bite us. Okay? And I think we should steer away from this as much as possible and just put the citizens first. Okay? I'm not against boats coming in a general area to pick up whatever, to enjoy it. What I am against is, is not having some kind of rocker there. Okay? For designating no wave zone caution that basically puts a flag up there and says, hey, there could be possible swimmers in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Other citizens? Yes.
Michelle Stigman, I live on 12th Street, and I have to agree, as far as the buoys and the boat zones, just to make it a lot safer for our family and kids to swim out there. I've been out there for the past two weekends. And both weekends, I've seen boats on other side of the 12th Street entrance that have gone off there and anchored off. One closer to the Clearwater that actually got so close to the beach, it was, it was stuck up there. They had to have people go out there and push it. So it goes back to the umbrella situation. If it's my sore, we don't care. We'd rather be safe on our beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jeff Keith, Arbogon. Be clear about this. The buoys are only 19th Street north. They don't have anything to do with the beach at 12th Street or 6th Street or 20th Avenue. So just wanted to make that clear to everybody that's here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's go back to the council. I'd say...
Right now, we do have buoys. I don't know if anybody really checked into them, and I know I did. For example, up in Clearwater, that's a swim-only area. No boats permitted in there. We're kind of unique. You can actually drive, I mean, I don't know if you know this, but you can drive a boat. You can take a boat right up to the shore here at Bellar Beach. It's perfectly labeled. It's the speed at which you approach. Once you're within that, it's basically, you've got to cut the engines. You've got to go to slow. But boats are permitted in that area right now. Just throwing that out there. And about the city manager, frankly, that's showing initiative. You're preparing work. We don't have all the hours of the day, but you went out there. You took the initiative knowing that we're trying to work with other governmental agencies. You prepared a response and you gave it to the council to review. So I for one applaud you. I applaud your work coordinating with the city attorney. Thank you very much. That's the type of initiative we like to see and will expect from the new city manager. Having said that, I would like, at least at this point, to understand fully. My understanding is that once you remove the buoys, that you are still, you can still bring boats up here. There are still swimmers in the water. And you're only really limited by, you know, personal damage. Like if you come in recklessly and injure somebody, obviously that's the same on the street than it is out there at the shore. I'd like to kind of understand that a little bit further. What happens when you remove the buoy? Next, and this is really for discussion. We've seen a lot of discussion tonight. And I propose really tabling this to a work session to have, perhaps, if you ever see it come in, tell us exactly what happens when you remove a set of buoys. You know, are, is there an expected speed limit within, say, 50 yards ashore, 100 yards ashore? I don't know. Those are my thoughts.
Did I hear a motion to table?
No, you did not.
No, you did not.
Yes, sir.
Just a clarification. Did, did Indian Rock Beach crack the code on this issue? Or, I mean, are we solely faced with a binary yes or no? Either take the buoys out or...
Indian Rock Beach has not enacted anything yet. Indian Rock Beach is in the process and they plan to workshop it as well. Though they, this is the first. It was presented in the last, I think, 60 days in their community that they've begun to address it. But the, their, their currently proposed intended approach is to have the buoys line the entire beach and have that be a vessel under man-hour or sail-only area. And so there would be no motor boats coming in full stop. And the presence of a motorboat in that is, is, would be a violation of this code, subject to a citation. Yes, we are at a binary mutually exclusive choice and now we cannot regulate the speed of the boats. Nothing in this ordinance eliminates ordinary torque liability for negligent acts or wantonly reckless acts. And people may have civil causes of action should things transpire in that regard. But the, no, I will not suggest that any community, certainly a community that hasn't enacted anything yet, has cracked into code. It's just they're taking a different approach. But for them, there has, to this point, and again, maybe it will manifest, but it has not yet, the vocal opposition to the buoys as they presently exist in their community.
But my question is, is it a viable option for us, rather than remove all the buoys, to replace the missing buoys and relabel existing buoys with this boat exclusion zone or this...
That is, that is an option to you. That's what was presented to you. I would suggest to you that, and I had a conversation with one of you earlier this week where I said, no proposal that comes to you is binding. You have the ability as a policymaker to make and change policy. So when there was no proposed discussion to, let's do this, but maybe change it. Maybe do one channel, zero channels, we'll slime up the beach. And there was no, there was no will, political will, or I should say, demonstrable political will in those minutes to have that discussion. Then at that point, again, we are left with the reverse implication. And again, in an effort to make your code clean and compliant, this is your option. If you wish to return to an option that has a lot of buoys or that operate in different, different purposes, we can have that discussion. Again, we were responding to what the apparent will apply.
Thank you. Let's leave this over.
Are you saying we can make like the whole beach a swim zone, period?
If it was your, if it was your desire politically, you could do that. As a matter of policy, you could make the entire beach a swim area, which would, a swim area that is a vessel exclusion zone. No boats, no kayaks, no nothing.
No paddle boards, no nothing?
Paddle boards, no nothing. That is an option in the law. I'm not taking an opinion on it and letting you know your options. Yes, that is an option.
Lloyd Roberts.
So somewhere along the way, I thought I had heard that FWC would not allow that, that we were mandated, for lack of a better term, to allow boat access. That's not true.
No. What was, what was said in the nuance is you cannot allow boats and then dictate on what terms those boats will operate. So this no wake zone, we're okay if they're just done like an A, B, C manner is what you cannot, you can't have no wake, low wake zones. Those are very, those are very specific administrative criteria for where those can be placed. This beach is not one of those places. And so your options are vessel exclusion or a series of vessel exclusions or vessels unregulated, as the mayor told me earlier. You can either regulate them or you can leave them unregulated, which would allow for all uses. This proposed ordinance would remove the buoys that are presently there, strike the safety zone, which you can't have as it's written. We would have to change them later anyways. That's what had been proposed to you. It failed.
Frank Baker.
Yes, first of all, about the 12th, the woman that spoke about the 12th Street access, there is a buoy between around 16th and 17th Street. Hence, so a boat coming north or south, you see that buoy and you have to start veering out west rather than coming close to the shoreline. If you remove the buoys, and I've had discussions and I can't see the back room here, but the sheriff may still be around. If you don't have any markers, I've been told by the sheriffs, we cannot enforce high-speed watercraft. They can come in as close as they want because there's nothing to warn them otherwise. Again, I believe 327.46, 1A clearly says, "A launching or landing facility available for the use by the general boating public when water weighs more than 300 feet in width or 300 feet of any boat range is allowable for idle speed, no wake buoys." I went to dinner with the family a couple of weeks ago. We're in the same place. By my surprise, these water taxis were pulling in to the shore, letting people in and out. I looked out at the beach, oh, idle speed, no wake buoys. I then contacted the FWC, showing pictures of all this. I got a reply back, well, we allow that on some areas. I then said, well, went a little bit further. I explained every part of 327.46 and five other statutes. Their reply was, we don't believe, our position is not compliant. Now, IRB has had a permit with EPA since 1996. 1999, the FWC was created. This in-depth agency that's ordering us or blowing us, okay, should be taking the task, maybe a joint city, since our attorney represents the other city. We should take this FWC to court for a cease and desist order because what they're asking us to do is to put a, put people in harm's way. Should we remove the crosswalks or go off the wall bar because some residents or some drivers do not oblige when I cross the street or my resident or my fellow residents cross the street? I get some comments, I won't make them here, but they're, they're there for safety. They're there so I can get across the street off the wall bar safely. Does a car have to stop? Sure has to stop. You remove the buoys? You clearly say what the sheriff department says. You allow high-speed watercraft in there. I am also reentering with the city manager of IRB saying we can remove the buoys. This is, this is just bad behavior. This should go back to a work session and we should tackle this problem for the safety of this community.
Mr. Baker, are you wanting to table this? Are you making a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that sufficient?
I think the vote will be difficult to see if you got there.
Patty, please call the board.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Gara?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Staple?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So it's five to two. It's tabled. We will deal with this in the next work session. I'm not really sure what's going to happen with the FWC because we're on their radar ahead. We'll, we'll deal with this later. All right, aisle 13, consideration of appointment. We're an alternate member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. We have two, two people who have stepped up. One is Dr. Ryan G. Diller and the other is Belinda Livingston. Before we get started, do I have a motion?
So move.
Say it.
Okay, great. Motion is made by Jody Shirley. Who made the second?
Frank Baker.
Frank Baker, okay. I know that Dr. Diller is not here. However, would anyone like to speak on this? Yes, sir.
I guess there were some concerns previously raised about his residency or voting rights in the city or something. I guess in the spirit of why we have this Citizens Advisory Committee, looking at his resume and his credentials, I, I think we would be very fortunate for anyone of his caliber and his training and experience to come forward and agree to assist the city of Bellar Beach. So I kind of want to set that aside. I don't think that's any showstopper in the case of Dr. Diller here. I, I think we are also... Mr. Hayes stopped me in the foyer earlier and I guess he just resigned from the Citizens Advisory Committee. So things are playing here and I'm wondering if we want to take that into consideration now or just going forward as if it didn't matter. We haven't had time to discuss that.
Well, right now, we're in need of an alternate. This just happened.
Yes, sir. Is John Hayes still here? Ron Zgannett, can you, can you validate what I just said? I'm sorry, David.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Citizens Advisory Council, we have one alternate currently. So with Mr. Hayes's reservation, that person would rise typically onto the committee. And then we've got these two new candidates as alternates.
Okay, so you say we do have one. Okay.
Correct.
All right, so we would have two alternates.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that being said, we could just go ahead and vote on both tonight if that works for the council. Randy, do you have a problem with it?
No problem. Generally, I prefer you take person by person in the event somebody has an objection to how you create that issue. I think that's a call for the desire to survive.
Mr. Mayor? The way that our ballot is, there's a yes and a no. So...
Mr. Mayor?
But we're not, we're not finished yet. Thank you very much. And thank you for the comments. Would anyone else like to say anything about Dr. Diller?
Mayor?
Yes.
I noticed on his application, he's been a resident of Bellar Beach since May of 2022. He's lived here for three months, which to me is a little, a little too soon to be on the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Yes, please.
So I appreciate that. Mr. Tom, I want to comment. I, I would be in favor of both of these candidates, just reading their resumes, the extensive backgrounds that they have. I think what we did, we looked at a variety of issues where there could be an ordinance, it could be a change to a code. And we also are the audit committee. And so having the depth and breadth of these two candidates, I think would be fine. And I don't necessarily think, I like getting hooked into the city early. So that's just my two cents.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to give us an update on his residence status.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. I just, I just wanted to give that. Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on Dr. Diller?
Yes, sir. We'll give you a question about the, the way the ballot is written. It says vote for up to one.
We can, we can correct that whenever the time comes. Next is Belinda Livingston. Is Ms. Livingston here and would she like to speak?
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I would love to be a part of the committee. My husband and I moved here in March of '21. We do own our home and we're our full-time residents. We moved here from San Antonio, Texas. My extensive background, prior to moving here, I was Director of Quality and Risk Management over in an inpatient rehab hospital, which I had oversight of the regulatory bodies, including all the committees within that hospital. So I do have extensive knowledge and background in committees. I also serve on boards as well. I was at the Alamo Chapter of the Case Management Society of America for three years serving. I also served on my HOA in San Antonio.
Thank you. Does any council members have a question for Ms. Livingston? Yes.
Great qualifications.
Thank you.
I like the medtrades. I like all of that stuff. Talk to me for a second about risk management.
Sure.
Because I know as managers, you're always trying to mitigate and reduce risk. But is it, is it realistic to believe you can eliminate all risk?
You cannot eliminate all risk, no.
So at some point, it's a manager's responsibility to manage risk. You try to mitigate it as much as you can, but at some point, a manager has to make a decision to accept some risk. He has to make that decision on what's acceptable and what's unacceptable.
That is correct.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Other questions?
No questions. Just thank you for stepping up. I appreciate it. And I see you'll serve on any other board, so, yeah. I like that. And thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Livingston. I appreciate it. City Attorney Laura, I am still having a little problem with this. The, I thought that we voted, you had to officially vote an alternate in to the, the regular position.
That's not my understanding of how that traditionally works. I wasn't aware that that was a sensitive concern for this particular position. Ordinarily, when you have an alternate, they serve on the committee. And in the absence of a member, they have full vested voting rights in the meeting. And in most boards, when a fully vested board member leaves, an alternate becomes a fully vested member unless it's an elected body. But elected bodies don't, you don't, they have an alternate commissioner for, you know, when one of you is out. So on subordinate boards like that, it is very customary for an alternate to move up. And then you continue to have alternates. It creates a, the, the part of the ethos behind that is creating a pipeline of leadership and membership. So you don't go from, you know, five to zero, five to zero. So you don't go from five to zero, five to zero, and then again. So that's the philosophical thought behind that. What's your code as you continue to speak on it? I'm not aware of anything that mandates that.
Patty, have we been in a position like this before, where we had one that was an alternate, and we now had a full permanent position that was also available? And we already had an alternate, and they put their name in, they had to go permanent, and then we had to replace the alternate. Do you remember any of this? Because it seems like we've done this way before. One second, Mr. Thomas.
Not all in one night, like they said. Mr. Hayes just gave me his resignation, so we haven't had it all in one night. And we have done it both ways, through different administrations.
The way that your code reads is it says vacancies caused in the membership of Citizens Advisory Committee, for any reason, shall be filled by appointment of a city council. I would submit to you that that could be interpreted in our fashion. You'd appointed alternates to the Citizens Advisory Committee, who would then elevate. Or you could read it in a more narrow interpretation to say, you have to be specifically appointed regardless of whether or not you're an alternate. My reading, in the spirit of preserving the functionality of the board, would be the former, not the latter, but the latter is, if you have been advised in that fashion, that is justified and reasonable interpretations.
Thank you.
At this real point, I don't think it's a big deal. But we did actually just do that with the Parson Rack. I don't know if that's in a different grouping, where we had someone in the Parson Rack turn in their resignation. We had an alternate. We also had another person who wanted to be involved with that committee. So at that same night, we voted to, we voted those people. One was the alternate, one was a new person. We ended up voting for the alternate to move into, onto the committee, but it didn't have to happen that way.
And if this body wishes to proceed that way, okay? All right, sir.
Yeah, just some corporate memory on this. Mr. Hayes is a perfect example. He was alternate, moved into the position. And I think along the interpretation of the charter, the tradition has been for the council to just do a vote. I mean, we kind of all understand we're getting to the same place, but it needs some legitimacy to the process, because they serve at the pleasure of the council, and it just kind of legitimizes the process.
That's not what I was thinking. That's the same line. Well, to begin with, we have, now we have, we're going to have two alternates that we're going to have to vote in. Let's go to the citizens. Let's hear if anyone would like to speak about the two candidates we currently have. And then we'll go back to the council, wrap this up. Anyone? Okay, back to the council. The only, really the only comment that I have is, is this twice now that Dr. Diller has attempted to be here and was not able to be?
He wasn't at the last...
That's my opinion.
The last time he was sit, he and his wife were sit. And then this time, he was called suddenly to Washington, DC. So, yes, it is twice.
Okay. I have no more comments. Anyone? Frank Baker?
That's it. I think I have my hair.
All right, let's just go ahead and vote these two candidates. So it said, the ballot that you have in front of you says vote for up to one. Well, now it says vote for up to two. I'd like for everyone just to scratch out one.
And procedurally, just so unclear. You had a member who was an alternate, you have a vacancy. Are you folks voting to elevate them? Or were you comfortable with them automatically being elevated such that you're voting for two? I just want to make sure I answered.
I'm uncomfortable with elevating them. Are you good with that, Ron? Everybody else? Well, let's think if we'd vote on that, all right? Do we have to vote by voice, or are we okay with all?
Either way is fine, we're sort of according vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
The alternate is now appointed. The alternate who was sitting as an alternate has now been elevated to the Citizens Advisory Committee. You now have two alternate vacancies and two candidates before you.
Thank you for clearing the air on that. All right, so you would cross out the one and write in two. And you are not obligated to vote for both. You can say no on both, or pick one, or whatever combination you would like.
And Councilmember Banker, are we going to have him hold up? He was just on last night.
Just standing there. If you ask the...
Councilmember Banker voted for Ms. Livingstone, and that was your lead vote, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberts voted for both. Councilmember Otero voted for Ms. Livingstone, and no for Dr. Diller. Mayor Gaddis voted for both. Vice Mayor Gunn voted for both. Councilmember Shirley voted for both. And Councilmember Sable voted for both.
I have a vote, both members are appointed as alternates to the Citizens Advisory Committee.
All right, thank you so much for stepping up of both candidates. I look forward to seeing what you can do. All right, we are on to item number 14. It says consideration of support of the Big C election of the St. Pete Beach Mayor, Alan Johnson, as the four Pinellas Beach communities represented for a two-year term. One of the Big C representatives is elected to represent all of the municipalities with Fort Pinellas, Pinellas Planning Council, and Metropolitan Planning Organization. Before we do this, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Jody Shirley, and I believe that was last thing, Tom. All right, Jody Shirley, you have the floor.
They are going to refer this to you, because you're more well-connected with it.
Okay, well, what happens is Fort Pinellas looks for, or they're looking for one representative to stand for all of us in the beach communities. Currently, Alan Johnson is the president of the Big C. He is also, has the largest community in the Big C, with the exception of Clearwater. The council spoke and, or had a discussion about it. Really, no one wanted that job. But Alan stepped up. Prior to that, it was Cookie Kennedy, and she did it for, I believe, 10 years. So Alan really wanted it, and all of the Big C members decided, yes, let's please represent us. While we were discussing that, I told him that one of the topics that I would like for him to discuss and to keep pushing is for an eventual lead bridge at St. Pete. Something to alleviate more traffic. And he said, yes, I know you've spoken about it many times, and I heard about it from your prior mayor. And we would like to see something done. And I will do what I can to help you. Does that mean anything was going to happen? Maybe, maybe not, but I just wanted you to know, that's the, that was really the only dog I had in mind by it. Because there's very little impact that Fort Pinellas has on Bellerbeach. So, any other questions? Any comments? Back to the council? Okay, I believe we can do this by a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and we'll notify Alan, and we'll also notify Fort Pinellas. All right, we're up to item 15. This is to authorize interim city manager to execute First Amendment to the inter-local service agreement for planning and managing services and/or special project work with Fort Pinellas. Before we begin to, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Leslie, do I have a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley, Leslie?
I will turn this over to Cal.
Mr. Reacher?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is to execute the First Amendment for the original agreement, which was signed with the Fort Pinellas for Planning and Managing Services and Special Project Work. It allows for a one-four-year extension, and everything else being the same. So with your approval, I'd like to accept this.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Reacher? See no hands. Let's go to the citizens. All right, let's go back to the council. We have Leslie Mataro having the last word.
And then I'll be there.
All right. Patty, since this is an agreement we're doing, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Sable?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Mr. Reacher, you are authorized to execute the amendment. Item 16. This is to authorize the interim city manager to execute an extension to memorandum of understanding for accounting services. Before we get started, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Jody Shirley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mike Sable. Jody Shirley, you have the floor.
So I've read through the scope of services. I am in support of executing this agreement. But I would like to, and I know they have some allowances for this, but you know, there's a fee for it. But I would like to see our account at least once a year to kind of go over our finances. The other thing I'd like to see added in here is that we have, that we did the financial reports with every councilman, because we have not, we've been behind, and I think it needs to be added to the contract.
Vice Mayor, yeah?
I would add on top of that, we had these budget meetings, and our city treasurer was in present. And so we're asking questions. The city manager, he said, oh, I'll get back to you. So a lot of those questions couldn't have solved right, probably, on the spot, to the expertise of our city treasurer.
There were some great advantages to having someone here on site, but I think the council felt like maybe she wasn't doing such a great job. And so here we are now, and we're not getting updates the way we should, for sure. So I would like to see that also. 3%? Pretty big. But I still would like to see something for our money. Somebody do a report. I would even go four instead of a year. I would like to see a full one. Let's hear an explanation. Good boy. You're good, Leslie?
I can see doing the city treasurer report, like we get the city clerk and the city manager report.
I will be open to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd also like, this is addressing other contracts too, that these contracts don't be presented until we finalize our budget. But we can talk to, I believe, this and the chair to move their cycles into ours, because I'm sure that every government around here tries to set the budget, get their expectations, and then vote. And so possible move these to after application of the budget. Thank you.
The only comment that I have on that, Mr. Sable, is that they generally don't know what they're going to charge that far in advance. So it's very difficult to set a budget unless you know what you're about to be charged. And let's just say that this was a 13% increase. Well, then we would notice and start shopping around. This at least gives us something that we can put into the budget. We know it's firm, and we're in for a year. Well, close to it is.
Right.
So that's my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you. Frank Baker, do you have any comments?
No, I do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's go to the citizens' office. All right, back to the council. Jody Shirley having the last word.
So, Mayor, I just, and how do we proceed with this? Is this, do we get city attorney involved in modifying the agreements? And what specifically are we going to have request? Are we going to do quarterly or twice a year? I don't, I think quarterly, they tend to just regurgitate.
Regurgitate, same thing?
Yeah.
I think it's just nice to have a body show up and say, I'm the one doing your accounting.
My experience with this particular member is if you requested that they show, just for purposes of introduction, they'd probably be amenable to that. I don't think that we would need a contract amendment. If you're going to start requiring presidents at monthly meetings, that's going to be a cost that they don't want to. And I can tell you almost to a certainty that they would like to change the cost to the contract, though I don't know that for sure. And I would have to communicate that. If your request is, yes, enter this, but ask that they come soon, we can make that a thing. If you want to make something, and if you put the monthly reports to be submitted monthly, if that's not already a contract term, we can say it's been approved subject to an added item that you will submit a monthly report for the prior month's business work. For, there may be some negotiation there only with, I can tell you, if you're working with external accounts, the concern becomes, well, that month isn't closed in audit yet. We're in May, we're auditing March. You know, there might be some lag. And we're not comfortable putting numbers out in the public sphere that haven't been fully audited, so there may be some lag that way. But if you wish for us to, if you wish for, if your direction to us is authorized to execute subject to a requirement that monthly reports be, we can communicate that if that's a deal breaker, we just have to come back.
Well, I'm wondering if there's even a problem. Mr. Reacher, are you getting a monthly report at all?
We got a monthly report at this meeting.
Okay, so my point is, is do we really have a problem? Or are we just, do we not have someone that's standing up and discussing with us?
I don't have a monthly report. I didn't get it.
Did it June?
No. Maybe it's just not getting distributed to us, or...
Okay, that's what I'm saying, is are we just not getting the information, but you are?
The financial report.
Yes, I thought you were getting this today.
Okay.
So I remember last meeting, we got two. We're backtracked.
Yeah, we had three months. We were on council and didn't receive anything for three months.
Right. Okay, but you did get two last meeting?
Yes, I think so, yeah. But I don't...
I apologize for it not being distributed. I thought this was hanging out together.
It's not just you, it's, this is not the first time this has happened, where it just somehow gets dropped off and forgotten. where it just somehow gets dropped off and forgotten about.
We can communicate that in approving the contract. I don't need a contract term based on the indications of performance and discussion happening here.
Okay. And I think it's perfectly reasonable to accept a monthly report.
Yeah.
Yes?
The agreement specifically says CPA will not be required to attend workshops or council meetings. These services may be negotiated for an additional fee. So maybe we can take that as...
If you want to take an expectation that they come here and speak to you, that's an additional, that would likely be an additional charge.
My recommendation would be to, for the council to approve this, and then we contact them and find out what it costs to have in-person visits, where we can ask questions and do things like that and see if that's where we want to go forward.
And that's a reasonable question to make.
Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Well, because this is dealing with money, Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Zabel?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Motero?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes, so it's unanimous. And Mr. Reacher, you are authorized to execute the extension. Thank you. Right now, we move on to unfinished business. Does anyone have anything that they would like to bring up?
Can we maybe just discuss what we're gonna have on the next workshop? What kind of items? I know we had a few that we threw out there. I don't know if anyone took notes of what we were...
It's been very entertaining, at the least, the schedule that we've had. We have, we're going to have to have, if Randy is able to work anything out with this guy, we're going to have to bring him in and definitely have a work session immediately. We're obviously going to be talking about boos again. Sorry, this hasn't gone away, but it's, we're on the fence about what to do. So we, that's another thing we need to bring up. Suggestions? Would like to definitely review this, the boos during the work session. And if possible, having a run from FWC, just to kind of explain what the actual vessel rules are, when we do remove boos or when you add boos, what happens?
I was on panel with the attorney who principally handled that. She and I were speaking just this past Thursday. I will reach out to her and see if they're able to participate remotely or offer somebody from their staff that is a leading staff. I think three attorneys from the state on this issue. So I will see if they can offer that. If not, I will be first and have to advise you guys. Thank you for offering your agenda. I appreciate that.
And remind them that we are zooming in, so they don't have to... Thanks, Ben Cal.
Dave, could you put the boos on the next big C meeting agenda? See what everybody's doing?
Uh, let's see.
Yep, we're...
When the next meeting is?
Well, it's three weeks out. Yeah, about three weeks out. But I will gladly just contact each one of the mayors and ask them. It doesn't hurt to have... Any other unfinished business?
Do you have a member's budget review that we can set up to, right?
We do have one coming up. I don't have the data, but I mean...
Patty, Richard, or...
We have anything for this week? We have, we have the calendar with a set schedule.
I know.
On the calendar, there's nothing before the regular council meetings in September.
Okay. We can certainly roll that back into the work session. But I think we were very close.
I think the thing I was hoping to see was, compared to a current financial statement, so we could see, is there any excess revenues, income, you know, money that could be? It seems like the end of every budget cycle, there's, "Oh, there's $300,000 left over. We're gonna use it on this project." Well, how do we miss all of that? That's, we never know about it until end houses at the end. So I don't know how that seriously appears.
It's through vehicle expense. All right.
So, I think that placeholders, yeah, that don't get spent. And so, I mean, it would be nice to know those things, right? If we're over budgeting $300,000, you need to know that, so...
Well, and that's where I think that in the past, there's always been a little wiggle room. And what I'm hoping is that as we move forward, we can tighten it up a little bit. And I mean, because it always looks like we're doing great and we're saving money. And, but we definitely don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot either.
So, yeah, that would be important to have that from our CP day. We have like an actual versus budgets statement that we can look at when we go to our next budget meeting.
Yeah, I mean, by the way, if we could, if they, maybe, maybe we set a matrix to where it goes beyond a certain dollar value in these big ticket items where suddenly we've got all this money in these different boxes. We'd like to know why that is.
Maybe by a value or possibly a percent of what was budgeted?
I would, I would definitely be interested in setting probably the top fifteen over budgeted items, then we just don't spend the money, and suddenly we take that money and move it elsewhere, because we're not really being fair and honest with our citizens if we're doing that. Vice Mayor Gunn?
There was a big ticket item we need to really think about. This emergency generator, we don't have a grain on that. So the question is, are we going to go ahead and pick that up in the next year? We're obviously talking about the city manager and what are we going to adjust the proposed budget for that. And the next work session, Kyle is going to present to us a recommendation on how to proceed or whether to combine Phase One, Phase Two, and both of them. So I mean, there's a large ticket items here that are coming up, and we need to discuss that before we take the fundamental actions on the budget.
We also had street logging in mind. That was another one, because there are just many, many dark spots. Any other comments on unfinished business? Mayor? Yes, sir.
We need to remember to review some of the outstanding code issues and balances in the next work session.
Yes, and that's something that I have been wanting to bring up with you, Randy, is that the town of Bel Air is currently reviewing their entire code. I believe that they got a quote to sweep the entire code ordinances and come back with fair legal changes, or at least advise the council to do that. I think it would be wise for us to get a quote like that, where we just went through the whole thing and started cleaning it up. But I'd like to know what it costs. Obviously, it's a, it's not, it's not a huge ticket item, but I'm sure it's in the tens to thirties or forties or something like that. I just think that there should be something we could do to start moving forward. We've been saying on the sign ordinance forever, and it still has not moved.
Mr. Mayor, we'd be happy to do that for the benefit of all present. Our firm also represents the, my colleague, J. Daniel, and other attorneys within our firm are performing that work. So I have access to the persons who produce that estimate. I'll speak with them and get an estimate after looking at your code to see what that looks like. I had already been making a list of things that I wanted to prioritize. One of the materials, some of the materials you have before you include, excuse me, my time expenditures and invoices for the past month, I can tell you, that would most definitely, excuse me, be a special project beyond the retainer, as we're sort of suggesting. But as you can see, the time that we've been dedicating while we, based on past usage, anticipated roughly fourteen to sixteen hours of returning time a month. We're averaging closer to forty right now on the retainer. That doesn't create a special charge for you. That's all of the $3,000 rate in that, you know, that business calculus we made. I think over time, we'll be able to flatten that number. That is just to say that while we have not yet approached that issue, it is not for lack of attention to the issues in this community. And I'm not saying you suggested that, but I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. And I'll just remind you and everyone else, we've sort of walked into a perfect storm. Okay, let's move on to council comments. This time, let's start with Councilmember Baker.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. We're going to be at Bicham Relus in the lawsuit. I just wanted to note, and a lot of citizens don't understand, that they can review the tapes back in July of 2020, when all the councils in agreement to attend Bel Air Shores meeting. Not in a hostile way, but just to try to relieve this unconstitutional ordinance that they create. About four eighty-four back council meeting, our former city manager sent, or contacted Bel Air Shores, informing them that a bunch of rabble-rousers would be attending that meeting. Hence, only a few of the councilmen did show up at that meeting or attended that meeting. But I want to emphasize that I ran in hopes that we can sit down and work things out. That has not been the case with Bel Air Shores on this issue. The lawsuit was filed, I believe, by a citizen in the end of, like, September 29th or whatever like that, a few months after that rabble-rouser email went out, clearly showing that Bel Air Shores had no intention of doing it. And if that lawsuit wasn't filed, in my opinion, Bel Air Shores would do nothing to remove that ordinance. And the longer it went, it would have been harder to fight this unconstitutional act. And good night to everyone.
Thank you. Up next is the Motero.
No comments.
No comment. All right, Lloyd Robertson?
Yeah, just a quick story, and we'll try to do this quick. I shared, I don't know, a couple of months ago, one of my first stories with regards to a really great experience I had with a citizen couple there in Bel Air Beach. I had another one when I was going through my campaigning process. And I really, really hope the couple that are actually in the audience tonight don't mind me sharing this story, because I think it's important. I turned down 12th Street. And I can tell you, one of the things that bothered me the most when I was campaigning is when people would ask me, "Which team are you on?" When I would knock on the door. And I just didn't like that question. I think it was sad that that was the state that our city was in. So there was a house on 12th Street, and it had three signs in the yard, and none of them were mine. And none of them were from the so-called team that I was on. So I knocked on the door anyway, because I enjoy talking to people. And a very nice gentleman came out. I introduced myself. Kind of my quick pitch was, running for city council. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected, is there anything I could focus on for you? That gentleman was Pete. And we stood there, I know, for at least an hour. And I did get an opportunity to listen to his story from Cuba, which was fascinating to me. And when I would come home at night, my wife would ask me, "Well, Patty, to go." And I said, "Wow, I just met like one of the coolest men I've ever talked to in my life." And explained how wonderful it was. And I had something to do when I was gonna go back the next day and give Pete some more information. And through that conversation, he said, "Do you know who my wife is?" I said, "No, actually, I don't." Then he said, "Well, you may have seen her online. She goes by Yoli." I said, "Oh, I have seen her name before." We still continue to have a great conversation. And I've spent time talking to Yoli. We've had great conversations. We plan on going out and having breakfast one day to learn more about each other. But the whole purpose I'm telling this story is, I know a lot of us campaigned about working through issues and creating a better friendship area. We have a small city, like sixteen hundred people. I'm not naive enough to think that everybody in this city is gonna get along. But I do believe we can work harder to fix some of those relationships. I've had people share with me that, hey, we were friends, good friends, with other people in this city, you know, three or four years ago. Now we don't talk. That's got to be fixed somehow. Somebody's got to make the first step and sit down and talk and try to get it resolved and find out what the issues are. If you were friends at one point in time, I can't understand. I mean, I'm sure things have been said. I've only been here three years. There may have been some things said and done that people consider very harsh. I don't know all of the things that have transpired. But I did know that if we don't sit down independently and talk through it, even if it's just a few at a time, you know, we've got, I don't know, pick a number, sixty people that don't like each other anymore. If a few at a time start working through it, there's got to be a way to fix that. And that's the, one of the bigger things I think we need to do in this city is to fix those challenges that we have out there, and it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Judy Shirley?
I have nothing further than that.
I can say...
Sure. Just wanted to tell you how refreshing it is to listen to the citizens. Actually, very welcome, listening to all the citizens, their concerns. We saw the council very thoughtfully listen and become engaged with the various stories throughout. As we know at every meeting, unlike previous terms, where citizens were bullied, they were demeaned, they were fought with, meetings lasting until 1:00 a.m. It's 8:30 here. We listened to all the citizens respectfully. We're taking it on board, and we still managed to complete the business of the people. Just wanted to point that out to the seventy-seven percent of you who elected us, on how the last light. So once again, elections matter. Thank you, and appreciate you coming up and come up to other city meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Now Vice Mayor Gunn?
I think one of the things I was on the hook for, and I don't know if it was at the work session or the morning party that, was to benchmark some financial over-budget issues in some other municipalities in the area. Just a quick overview, and I can send out a hard copy of your examples of this stuff later on. But I mean, I didn't have to look very far, because in my estimation, the city of Warburg has a really great channel of budgeting and that sort of thing. So if you go in and you look at their proposed annual budget for fiscal year 23, what you find is this huge 450-page document. It's huge. But if you scan through the table of contents very quickly, what you find is that on page 23 of this 450-page document is the discussion and overview of the strategic plan. So what I'm looking for are benchmarks. We're looking for better ways of doing something. Somebody's already cracked the code on something, or figured out how to do it in a better way, or validation that we're on the right track. And that's what I saw here, is this strategic plan does the handshake with the capital improvement plan, it does the handshake with the budget process, and there's a family plan that we need to start paying attention to. The other thing is a budget brief. They have this really nice two-page budget and brief that basically breaks down for any person to quickly glance at their breakdown of the budget. Again, intuitive, comprehensible, kind of tells you what the revenues are, what the expenditures are, and what's important, and what their, what their sacred priorities. The second thing is the capital improvements program. Proposed five-year capital improvement. Kind of discuss that, and this is the validation. Five-year program broken down by, where are our revenues? Where are our expenditures? Where is the capital project lineup? Do we need to horse trade in here? Do we need to change priorities? And once again, they set up a matrix... And once again, they set up a matrix just like we've got with their capital improvement plan is to set priorities. But that's where it boils down to the budget process because that's kind of the expansion during the budget process. So I think we're on the right track and Kyle's looking at it into a lot of this stuff. He's doing a great job of that. Item next, best practices. One thing that I've never been comfortable with is coming to these council meetings and applying a stack of papers in front of the desk. And the reason why is because we walk in here to do business and we hit the ground running. Things are moving at a very brisk clip. There's a lot of faith going on. People are trying to listen. And we don't have time to take a document and sit down and glean the information that's trying to be presented and try to filter it and factor it into our thoughts and our debate. So kind of what I'm proposing is that we need to start thinking about reducing it. There's, there's really no reason why we need to come in here and get bushwhacked by still sitting there.
Do you mind if I make a comment on that, Ryan?
Well, let me make my point and then we can come back to that. Along the same lines as, hey, sometimes things change at the last minute. I, I understand. That's, that's, that's the business we're in and we, we try to deal with it as best we can. But to the maximum extent possible, we need to try to get stuff out in a timely fashion so that we can look at it from the comfort of our armchairs at home and try to understand what's going on. We shouldn't have to sit down to things and try to glean through it beforehand. There are some concerns about that. Obviously, things change at the last minute or we have last-minute information as a given. But I don't think it's a satisfactory response that all the time if you're trying to shelter us from sunshine issues, okay? And if a council member tries to, or is upset with producing some, some information and they want to get that out to the council or review prior to a council meeting, then we need to sit back and have some discussion about the validity of that and the risks involved with it, okay? We understand that there are possible risks. Some of that stuff can be leaked. And I'm sorry I put you on the spot, Mr. Relinsdale, because it, this is kind of stuff that backers into this stuff. We get advice and recommendations on perhaps what should or should not go into the, the package or how council members should communicate. But it's understanding of risk. If it's a low risk and we mitigate it to the maximum extent possible, educate all the council members that you don't hit the reply all button, that you don't respond to it. And you read the, the disclaimers at the bottom of the same clerk's email to say, "Don't hit the reply button on this stuff before responding to it." Take that at heart. That's how we do business. And other than that, if, if there is that possibility, then the question is, is it high risk? Are we going to end up in a lawsuit over this? Or is this really, really low risk and the possibilities of it happening are so remote that we're willing to take on those consequences? So that's enough said on this paperwork. One thing would be the attorney billing cycle, which is this document here. This is one of those things that we had tried to change the protocol on this to, so that the city attorney billing cycle was such that it came in before the council meeting. So that we had time to sit down and review these things. Because there's a lot of information in here that give us background on issues that are being taken place between the city manager and the city attorney. What progress has been made in certain areas? Who's being contacted? And that sort of thing. So it, it's not a, a concern about the billing so much as it gives us insight as to the machinery of what's going on within the city and how business is being taken care of. With respect to the billing on this, I think we need some sort of big picture view of this thing. Because when we selected the city attorney, one of the concerns we had was the billing protocol. Which was, which was better? Should we go with a, a retainer fee? Or should we break it down to a buy billable power? So that's something maybe we can review in another time. That's all.
Okay, speaking about the, I guess, the distribution of information. I understand that there are times where it would be nice to receive this information in advance. A good example is the city attorneys bill. However, there are other times where I don't think it's appropriate. You yourself have tried to give us information at the last minute that could be interpreted as trying to sway him and, and change the council's mind or educate the council on something that they don't know about. Unfortunately, you're, you've been passing it off to Patty. And it's up to Patty now to make a judgment call on whether it's safe to send this out or not. In my opinion, I think if you're going to do that, insist on doing that, then you should just send it directly and carbon copy Patty. That way, you did it. She didn't do it. You did. In case there is someone calls the, the council out for violating a sunshine law. Nobody can stop or one another from emailing each other. But I certainly don't want it to fall on the city staff to make that judgment call of whether it's a sunshine violation or not. And they're having to call the city attorney every time one of your emails comes in.
I, I certainly appreciate that position. For instance, is today, and this is what kind of gave rise to this issue, was because I sent out some information on, because of the data. Hey, give us, give us a recommendation. So late last night, I sent it out and it's on the wire this morning. It hasn't hit the wire. So, gee, maybe there's a problem with the server. I've experienced server problems where it's not distributed. So I, I send an email and say, "Hey, you know what's going on? I'll send another copy." The response is basically, I'm waiting on the answer to a question. Sort of go on hard copy. It's on the dais. And if the answer had just been, "I ran by the city attorney for recurrence" or whatever, and the recommendation was, "Let's proceed with it in this way", that would have been the end of the conversation. We could have just discussed it at work session or something like that. But I, I think there is value in anybody, if they want to send out objective information. Next, low risk of interpretation for a sunshine violation. Then by all means, Patty is our public records custodian. And she is supposedly our, our expert on sunshine enforcement with the backup of the city attorney. So I don't think it's, it's, it's an invalid request to say, "I want to communicate to the city clerk because if I've got it wrong and I've misinterpreted what I'm trying to accomplish here or I've missed something", I, I would like Patty to say, "Glenn, I don't think that's a good idea. And I suggest we run it by the city attorney." And if the city attorney comes back and says, "Yeah, that's not good. The risk is too high here. That's, that's not it", then that's fine. But if, if, if I don't have that cover, then at some point it's like, communication is kind of off.
Randy, we, we kind of touched on this in the first meeting. And I asked for you to hold your comments until we got to this point. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity. I recognize that I'm speaking when it's functional to your folks' turn. So thank you. I travel the state educating on sunshine law, public records, and ethics. I take this very, very much to heart. I will give you legal advice. I will on occasion tell you what prudence dictates and tell you that the law does not require X, Y, Z. Let me be explicitly clear. It is not, unto itself, a sunshine law violation had Member Dunn, for example, sent his one-page memo out to you this morning. That is not by itself a sunshine law violation because a sunshine law violation occurs when there's an illegal reliance. The problem is the susceptibility or the potential for a violation. Shouldn't anybody reply all, reply directly, start a sidebar or otherwise about the issue? Especially where the matter is being sent out only hours before publicly this meeting. We can neutralize any potential of effects by just having it at the meeting. I recognize that that creates an inefficiency for you folks, the policymakers. And that's a frustration and a challenge. But it's a frustration and a challenge that is baked into the Florida statutes. The problem that I see with a broad-based policy of, or rather, a, a subjective policy of, let's take it case by case, is one, it creates a backlog because I was contacted by the clerk and manager this morning shortly after receiving it. I was on other calls. I called them as soon as I was first available, which was not, was not within an hour or two of this Member Dunn's emails. The second issue is what, Member Dunn, in your comments, you said, I think where it's low risk and you're just transmitting objective data. As we've seen in our modern era of facts, alternative facts, and whatever other kind of fact you may find, what to one man is objective data, this is another man's op-ed. And so trying to make some kind of blanket rule, you run into this slippery slope where what to you seems sensible and measured, to what Member Roberts seems sensible and measured, and going down the line are all defined as different things. And nobody considers themselves in the wrong when they act in general. And so to avoid that harm, I suggest that you not transmit things directly if you don't have to. The other part is it eliminates the susceptibility, even if you have a very good defense, to having to defend against that, as some of you folks well know. The time it takes to prove your defense and get a resolution on that can linger. The other point that I wish to raise in, in talking about this more broadly, and I did have the opportunity to talk about this with Member Dunn, is something that I'm learning about the style of this particular body is this body tends to, more than other bodies I've seen in a council manager form of government, deputize individual members to pursue an issue. Go forth and do the research for us, go and then report back. Ordinarily, you report back to your peers at a public meeting. But you're wanting to give them everything before the meeting. And then maybe somebody has a concern and now I'm telling you, you know what? Don't transmit it. Just make it part of the meeting. And that's true. That is frustrating. The way that tends to work in a council manager form of government in most communities is you say, "Manager so-and-so, you know, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Doe, I would like you to go on this. Please work with Member Dunn who may have specialized information on this or, you know, Member Moore who teaches on ethics. Please talk to him." But I, we would like the manager to synthesize this, the manager to produce something for our consideration, and the manager to distribute it. And then you take out the sunshine law implications of that. It's the manager communicating with staff. They can take input, but not polling people, not saying, "Hey, Dave, I said this. Will you have to say..." None of that. Just, hey, I've been asked to work closely with one council member in particular. But I, the manager, will still be the repository and the conduit by which you receive this in a neutral fashion and avoid any sunshine implications. To me, that's actually the better approach, longer term. And that may take some adjustment and some figuring out how we do that without having to create some kind of rigorous technical policy. But that, to me, is where this is really where the challenge comes. Because then you put me, your staff person, who may have sage wisdom on the issue but feel uncomfortable ultimately making that call, or me, the advisor, as the bad guy, constant naysayer and say, "No, I crave inefficiency. Never, never communicate. That's not really how I prefer to operate." I recognize, I don't go to meetings without agendas. It's a waste of time, right? And if I don't have the agenda backing materials, all the more. I understand that inclination. I'm just suggesting that the better approach would be, though they are suffering with many, many things, that you not, to use the term you said, Mr. Gunn, be Sally or individual council members with that burden and that zeal to communicate and then have their hands sputtered by the law or the advice of the council, of the, of the attorney. And I, I just want to close by saying again, I give you folks advice. You are grown adults. If you choose to ignore it or don't think it prudent under the circumstances or perhaps too cautious, ultimately, you make the decisions you wish to make. I give you advice and it's for you folks, if the council members of this community determine how this community will function.
Thank you very much. Other comments?
Anything else? Just, just a couple of things. Our plate is full. I mean, we're, we're all struggling in this burden of meeting, meeting, meeting. And we can't seem to clear the agenda. So my suggestions are all in the vein of time management and productivity. Manage risk, manage risk. That's what you pay those big bucks in Miracle, managing the risk. And if that's, if that's the protocol we want to use, I accept that wholeheartedly. For my own coverage, I will continue to communicate through the city clerk because I want one last check or a sanity check. Am I doing this right? Did I miss something? So I'm sorry, Patty, but I rely on your expertise and experience. And if I have a communication with other council members... No, I am not going to communicate directly with council members because I think that's, that's sending your cell phone for failure. I will use all of the resources available to me. That includes the city clerk and the city attorney. So thank you very much.
I won't say anything else about this topic. We're sort of a slot in pass just because of things that I've already discussed. But that's, that's, it's all good conversation. Thank you, Patty, for all your hard work. Many thanks to everyone who attended tonight. I also like to thank those who watched at home. Very important that you stay informed and when possible, get the information firsthand. With that being said, I do have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Frank, do I have a second?
Second.
Mike Saban. All in fair.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everyone.
You can hear me, Frank.